Um, do you want to motion the doctor's? Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's made and second. Motion's in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to motion, um, to approve the consent agenda items?
Yes.
Motion made?
I'll second.
Motion's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can move on down to get speaker's communication information items. Uh, Kanan and Herga?
He's not here, but he gave the letter.
Okay. This has to do with the pilgrims and the northern Danenburg, we've always given them permission. The only thing I ask is that, uh, that they stay in contact with the sheriff, so he knows the routes and everything. So we need to contact him, or maybe table this, maybe, and then connect me. So, can you contact him?
Yes, I could have, he's probably running off with my children and friends, so yeah. I'm sure they're good enough, but...
I have no problem with it, it's always done a great thing.
No, I'm wondering if that's sort of, um, what, does it involve police man hours and...
The reason for that, because they want to close some roads.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, do we have the man hours?
Well...
We don't have any other major event going on, do you second, that you know of?
I think, um, the reason that, because we don't have any city, but that was just mainly that if they have a problem, that, you know, they're aware of it and they can call.
Okay. Have they talked to you at all, Sheriff? I gave him a copy of the letter.
Okay.
Okay? So they want closure of several streets from us, we have multiple road markers removed in the past. He, uh, he is gonna get me a map, he did, okay, so I'm just waiting on that as well. But I didn't want to hold off on the letter any longer, just so that we can at least get something and that the council is aware of this.
Okay.
So basically, we need to table it until we get the map?
Right. Yeah, we'll table that one first. Okay. Uh, United Community Action Network Indication, that's set for April 18th, 9:30 to 3:00 at Lakeview Hospital.
April 3rd?
It's on the TV, by April, to the front seat winners, so... Lake County Examiner Schedule for the Year End Informational. Finding their schedules, uh, got the expo coming up. Is that, have different packages?
Is this something that we've done in the past, you know?
This is something, I think this is something new, Mike?
What's up?
This, um, examiner, um...
Are you talking about the packages, or the event itself?
Yeah, yeah, the year end information.
I mean, the packages aren't, let me look, they don't tell me anything. Oh, I mean, the packages are nothing new, as far as prices, that I don't know, but, um, yeah, the packages don't say anything new, it's something we've done recently, I did hear.
So, I'm not sure what you're looking for, what we as a town about.
Actually, we advertise a lot.
Well, I meant for the expo specifically.
Oh, what? Basically, like, to bring air quality in, public works, um, talking about the water, the geothermal, they want, like...
Like a booth, oh, okay, so like a booth. Yeah, so if you guys want to have, I mean, there's, I don't know how many even have, we have several coming in from out of town, um, yeah, it's just if you guys want a booth, they would be, like she was saying, air quality, or, you know, public works.
This looks like it's asking for ads.
Well, it's probably ads.
It's ads and it's just...
Oh, and your, and your choice of the, uh-huh, okay.
So, um, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Okay, will you move on down?
Yeah.
Public comment period, citizens can address council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect to council and others, and the tenants, please lend your comments to three minutes and please hit main and address to the record. So, we have a public comment.
Stuart Stewart, Lakeview, Oregon. I just had a couple questions. Have we got a contract with the sheriff's department to...
Working on it.
Oh, I gotta address that. We are, we are talking with the sheriff's department, um, there were some budget issues that had been confirmed, and they've been confirmed and dealt with, and I will be meeting the sheriff here, and the committee probably Thursday, and we'll be moving forward.
Okay, so there, at this point in time, there is no contract on it, but the glitches have been resolved?
There, uh, yeah, exactly.
What would you say is a percentage of progress on that?
Okay, where, percentage of progress on it, we're probably... I mean, as far as between the committee and the sheriff, we're probably ninety percent there. And then, once we, once the committee and the sheriff come together, then it'll go to council and to the commissioners for approval, and at that point, it'll go legal, and then go from there.
Okay.
Hey, anybody else?
My name's Rhonda Dial, I live at sixteen South First Street, and I want to respectfully ask our town what it's gonna take to start getting some animal control here. And I know that we can't just, like, implement, decide today and implement it tomorrow, but we need to start working on this. The other day, we had two different sets of dogs mating in the street on Facebook. Now, I know it's funny at the offset, but the puppies afterwards are not funny. And I've been dealing with this on my own for years, I'm not crying around about it, I just need our town to step in and make a plan for us to have some animal control in the future. I don't care what I have to do to help, I don't need to be paid, I just need some help here, and if I can do anything to help our town move forward on this, I will do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, terminal. That's something that we need to address, uh, we did have animal control, but we did somewhere along the line of funding for that.
With the budget coming up, I know that's something that I'm very passionate about as well, is that, um, it's, it's animal control here, and, um, I think that that's something we need to look at budget stuff and figure out where we can put some funding towards that. It may be small in the beginning, but we gotta start somewhere, um, you know, and that's definitely, we're going to budget come March, we should finish that out by June, um, I think we definitely need to that and talk about, or look at, what our old ordinance is, I would imagine there's probably something out there, I don't know, but what our old ordinance are, ordinances are, and if we need to pass new ones, kind of get that into a revenue system or something.
Do we have any more on the public comment? Okay, carrying on, move to department reports, nine one one, Scott's not here, Dennis?
Nothing further, unless you have questions.
Pardon?
Nothing further unless you have questions for me.
Okay, everything going good over there?
Seems to be, right now.
Okay. Uh, nothing for, to help police unless the sheriff has anything for us.
Pretty much, yeah, we update our ending, we're out.
All right. Uh, public work, Jeff?
Yeah, we, we had a, a citizen came in, was concerned about our street signs or the lack of on it, and since then, we've taken inventory and, and put out a request for quotes from two different companies to get our, replace most of the street location signs, they're all pretty faded and outdated, so we're waiting for a quote on those. Naturally, within doing our snow removal, um, we got well sticks, the well that we had relined with casing, and, um, the well driller is ninety-nine percent done, Daryl?
We're done.
Okay, he's still on the hole?
Yeah, he is. Machine on the hole.
Okay, so, but yeah, so we'll be, uh, we have some in-house stuff we gotta do, gotta regravel pack it, get a clamor pump over here to put the pump back in it, and rebuild the building will be ready well before springtime when we need it, so we'll have that up and running. I've been working on a water resource protection grant from Oregon Health Authority, I've never written a grant before, but for no time like the present, um, they're trying to tailor make this grant that's available for two years in a row for thirty thousand dollars each time, um, and I've been working with one of their representatives to try and tailor make our grant to fit their needs, so hopefully we'll get it this year and next year, um, haven't set that off yet. I had a question for Daryl, actually, uh, I saw that with our letter of intent, we got back a score of sixty-eight. What does that mean? What does that, how does that rate us against other projects?
That's, that's a pretty good score, uh, that's on the water treatment process. We should be getting a, a letter, uh, from, uh, that'll come from Larry Holzken, from that department, to invite us to put in an application, so, um, I expect that tomorrow or the next day, so that will, we can get that application in. And I add, the other part of that financing was through USDA rural development, so we've been working on that application also. We have to do all that online with the special accounts, and then we were, we were basically shut down for thirty-five days.
So the government shut down, it's possible it could happen again Friday, so...
Yeah.
So your deadline's Friday? It's like mad dash, yeah, yeah, understandable.
Daryl, do you have any more to report, Daryl?
Uh, the well six is complete, uh, that well had a casing failure, the bottom was full, at the bottom thirty-five feet, um, we cleaned it out, ran into some things in the bottom, um, recamered it again, located it so that the driller could get by and get removed. We put a new ten-inch, ten-inch liner down the well, um, and annual space between the twelve-inch and ten-inch, uh, what Jeff was talking about, we're gonna fill the gravel pattern. The town used to corinate down the wells, a long time ago, I, I pulled them out in the late eighties, but sometimes if the coring supply tube was not in the right place in the well, it's the casing, maybe one of the cases, and so, anyway, that well should be back for another thirty, thirty years.
How many wells does that give us going?
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, yeah, just hang around because, um, you know, we got another item, it's here, actually, there are probably two on that one. I need to back up on informational items, uh, call the guys. This one, this one I do have to read, it's addressed to council, and it needs to, but I have two letters here. One is to whom it may concern, at the town of Lakeview, I live on South Third Street, across from the high school, and I'd like to ask one last time, please put up residential speed zone signs from the west end of Third Street at the Little League Fields to the east end of Third Street at F Street. There is one sign at the east end of the street and nothing else in between. I count one hundred plus speeding a day and get told anything from drop dead to, I won't say when I ask people to slow down. Please do something before someone gets killed. We are working on this, Roberta and I both got an email from an outfit on these signs, and Scott's been, um, also involved with doing these signs before, so we're gonna look into getting those, but we've also been working with the state highway to put up, uh, what were the, crossing signs for the kids on Third Street, that they can hit a button and the lights flash and people's gotta stop so they can cross the street.
On the highway?
Yeah.
On, on three, on three ninety-five?
On the highway or on Third?
On the highway, on Third Street.
On the highway.
That's right.
One on each side of the highway.
At Third.
Yeah. It's a safe crossing zone.
Has anybody looked at the Safe Rocks to School Program, this organ, offered that, or is there any money left in it for the state organ?
Yeah, we have, we have gotten some money on that before, um, you know, I can't tell you, I can't, I, I don't know.
Because that was a federal program that was distributed by the states, I believe that was.
Yeah, a bunch of, uh, ramps, curb radioes, that's what built those down between the school.
I don't have some of them either, I'm seeing one of them.
It should, it's called the Safe Rocks to School Program, it's a federal program that the money's distributed by state, and Lakeview should qualify for it, if there's anything left, and it's been around for quite a few years, so there might not be any more. And if, if we get those, Jeff, if we can get those, I'd be more than willing to work with the guys, install them, I've done about a hundred and fifty of them, they're pretty simple.
You're talking about the flashing one?
The, both, the crossing, the flashing one for pedestrian crossing, and also the radar speed signs for school zones, like the ones that are on three ninety-five, or those are just pretty simple. The northern, the northern one, they don't make a sign, they're not, I guess, it doesn't...
The one out north has been really effective, I live right there, and it'll slow people down, you know, fifteen or twenty miles an hour, you know, even when there's no school bus or anything present, it's just slowing everybody down.
There is a sign because they don't turn on there. They, they work good, because they don't come on until somebody's there, so as soon as they turn on, it catches your eye, it'll get you, do you, that, yeah. We did all the towns, we did all of Redding, we did all the Shelslake City, Amish, and Redwood. And in Paradise, three years before this fire, they had, they had, I think, forty sets of them, in Paradise.
I'll, I'll look into it, see what they're at funding wise, and what options we may have, isn't that another one, and I, I got to look at my notes that we discussed, um, besides just that one?
Because I can also, I still have two manufacturers that build those, I could probably get a dealer price from this still, depending on how many I bought from the customer, but you would have to tell them, is it?
Um, this one here, council, it's one we all received, and I'm not sure if, if I'm supposed to read it on the floor, or if it's a, you know, uh...
Confidential.
Confidential. But I've never read any of this before.
Well, sure that's...
So, it's, you know, but we all have it, and we know what it says, so that one there, I'm gonna...
Probably sit down with Ted on the report, it's red.
Right, I don't wanna get in trouble. So, let's move on to...
Hang on, Stuart, Stuart?
Yes.
Sorry, approach?
Yeah.
Stuart, Stuart, and I just wanted to comment, that South Third Street, from the time you turn off the road, Roberta, on the South Third, it does say twenty-five miles an hour past the Little League Fields, so if people choose to speed through there, then it's, I'm just letting you know, that's, it's twenty-five from that point all the way up through Third Street.
So it's posted down there?
It's posted down there, as you turn off the road, Roberta, on the third, South Third Street.
It's a little sign, one of the old ones, isn't it?
But I see it.
Yeah, yeah, I do too.
Well, I, I understand, I mean, I'm just...
I'm just clarifying that, there, there is a sign posted further on down.
Yeah, and I, I think we're, part of where she's going with this, is there needs to be some crossing control and some radar sign around.
Yeah, I know, that, that street, yeah, I understand, South, South Evans, uh, Third Street.
I think one of the other issues that we get with, and this is obviously not the time of year for it, but, um, the section I live on, Roberta, one of the issues is it feels like a very large road, because there's no lines on the road right now, well, it kind is. But I think people tend to speed when they don't have that confined space a little bit more, the lines aren't so bad over there on South Third, but I know that they are fading, they probably have more...
We, we don't have a striping machine, so the county is always taking care of those in the past, and...
Okay, so maybe we just, well into the, I don't know whether we'll get there.
So we really need to, to make some kind of an IGA with the county to do so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a huge cost, but it'd be a small deterrent, you know, for, for people, a little less role filling.
Yeah, maybe we do a labor trade, we got a project.
Okay.
Can I address that speed?
I just wanted to say one quick thing, too, is I want to give kudos to the people who are plowing the streets on a Sunday, clearing them out, clearing out the driveways, awesome job, I don't know who's responsible for that, but...
Yeah, poor guys.
So, yeah, awesome, thanks.
Yeah, Dave, you guys have really done a great job, staying on top of it, and, uh, staring for this new apocalypse coming up, right?
Snow now?
And why that?
Thank you very much.
Sometimes these guys are out at midnight, plowing, so you only see a few of them, because the other half's gotta work during the day.
I see all of them, they go right by my house. I listen to them all night long.
Sheriff Taylor wanted to address the speeding, um, concerns, Ray. Sheriff Taylor wanted to address the speeding concerns?
We, we've received multiple, um, complaints regarding speeding in that area, usually it's during baseball season and, and during the summertime. We've addressed it on multiple occasions also. In fact, I've assigned, uh, our deputies down there mandatory two hours a day, um, at intermittent times, high, uh, high, um, traffic times, when, uh, practice is in session, and when they're having baseball games. The average, average, medium speed that we got out of there was thirteen miles over the speed limit. Now, is that excessive? When there's kids around you, that's excessive, uh, but the highest speed we got out of there was forty-seven miles an hour. We're getting complaints that they're going eighty miles an hour, they're going a hundred miles an hour, they're going, you know, fifty miles an hour, that's just not the case. I think what we see when we're watching vehicles go by, it obviously looks a lot faster than what it really is. We've even given residents of that area a handheld radar, they've gone out there and they've clocked, uh, vehicles, again, you know, the average medium speed is forty-three miles an hour. Where we have worked most of the time is on the S Street, like S is in Sam, and that goes right down to the, the baseball fields. It changes from twenty-five, I think it goes to thirty-five to Center Street, so if it's thirty-five miles an hour and you're doing forty-three, we're talking eight miles over the speed limit, not really that excessive, um, but when there's a bunch of kids around, it is, we like to keep them down. We've made multiple, um, I would say, close to a hundred traffic stops. I don't tell my deputies I have to write tickets, that is up to their discretion, if somebody needs a ticket, they get a ticket, if somebody can, can get the message, slow down, with just a verbal exchange, I feel education is the best way to take care of this, um, so that's how we deal with that, if somebody gets it, they get a verbal warning, if they don't get it and they need some, um, intervention, we'll write them a ticket, so, it, that has been addressed, I want you to know that we have specifically addressed it for the last three years on multiple occasions, and there is a, a problem, but not as significant as, um, I think they want you to do.
Well, and I think with the uniqueness of the way our roads are in some of our areas, when you go from forty-five to thirty-five, twenty-five in a very limited span, it can be a little bit of a, an abhor, I think, sometimes. It's not me, trust me, I'm scared of that for speeding, right around school and all the way.
The people that we catch speeding in these areas the most are the people that live in these areas, so there's big problem there too.
Okay, um, let's move on to new business. Southern Oregon Tourism Representatives regarding lodging tax, we met with them earlier, and as of this time, I'm going to appoint, uh, Mike Warren as the, uh, chairman of our lodging tax committee, because he has been doing this for several years, and he understands this lodging tax a lot better than I do.
Thanks, Mayor.
You can work, get your committee together and work back and forth with the chamber and see what you guys can come up with.
Thank you very much.
Uh, drinking water, state revolving fund, that's what Daryl just was explaining to us, so... And then, now this one, advertisement for bid sewer and water extension for Red Rock Biofuels, Daryl?
Yeah, that project is up the bid, it extends the water line up past the Red Rock site on Cattermas, from the intersection of M Street where the ready-mix site is, uh, or ready-mix plant is, or whatever, it extends a sewer line, uh, up to the Red Rock site going east on Cattermas. The project is, is advertised, um, we had it for a while, if you're, if you remember, Red Rock had to sign the agreement, and they actually paid a one thing that's on that one, that one is, the town's kind of just the medium to get that done for them. Red Rock today, um, the local project manager said he didn't want me to work down there until September.
Till when?
Few months ago, they wanted the water really quickly, and, so, well, they didn't want anything on the road interfering with their construction traffic, you know, on Cattermas, so, um...
How many days is this project scheduled for, Daryl?
Oh, construction time, probably thirty to forty-five to outside.
And you want us to have it September?
So I guess, I guess I don't really care, um, I can issue an addendum, but that's part of the contract, it can't work till that time.
And we're also gonna have to put the paving out for bid also?
Yeah, and if that, if that is this year, I assume that's this year, and that, that's a fairly tight window to get that done.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be over fifty thousand, I'm sure.
Eighty?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you're running, the temperature issue's getting quite a minute.
Well, you do, unless you have asphalt here, the things that we run into with asphalt is we generally have to truck it, then a hundred miles, so if, if that asphalt plant there, but I don't know what the plans are for that, still sitting there anyway. What, what I'd like to do on this, I think since we have some time, I'm gonna extend the bid date, uh, a week, uh, that's not gonna hurt anything, and, uh, I'm not gonna be here that week of the twenty-sixth, um, I've got a schedule, so I'm not gonna be gone, but I think I'm gonna just extend that a week, extend the bid date, and, uh, I might chat with Red Rock some more.
Yeah.
We need to go ahead with the bid opening, get it, so contractors get it in on that.
They're gonna move it from February twenty-sixth to March fifth?
King?
Also, in my report, um, I didn't quite finish, um, I wanted to have a workstation with the council to deal with some of this public work things, um, so I've requested that, I know you've been busy with the sheriff and all the meetings with that, but I, I would like to get one scheduled, if, if you'd say.
Yeah. Okay.
When, when would you like it?
Uh, maybe if, yeah, I'll be gone, your next meeting ends at twenty-four?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, how about the first one in March?
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, the twelve?
Yeah, we, we, March twelfth. Look at that, thirty, forty-five minutes, so...
That would probably be a good opportunity for us to go over any questions about water master plan, I mean, I've been there, we knew, nobody was there as well, we just got a copy of that, um, maybe something got you there already, if they have any questions for, I mean, I know Scott's more of a water buff, but, um, I certainly would like a few, probably a few questions.
Any more on that, then? Let's go to Licky Lily, we've met with, uh, them, and, we've changed some things there, and they'll meet with their board and pull me back together again.
And I did talk to Jeff, briefly.
Okay.
Got Jeff? What's he and Jeff's here?
Um, they can do the backflow testing. They can do the backflow testing for us. We might need to figure out something with the grader because the grader may not always be operable. So that may not be something we can include. And I hate to include it and us not have an operator.
No, I'm sorry, you need to sit down and talk with Jeff if you're making any, you don't have to provide them.
Let me, let me, let me go talk to...
Are we talking about 20 hours of work or are we talking about...
I don't need to do that, it'd be like a day of grading the, when the weather...
Yeah, get rid of those...
Ardues voluntarily did it a time or...
Get rid of those potholes and stuff down there, but...
Yeah, we did Dog Lake Construction.
Yeah, I think that one we probably will have to take out.
Well, I was gonna see if I could, if I could get Collins to donate their grader with an operator to go down and see if they'd volunteer to do it.
Well, the Little League has no problem getting somebody to donate it. What the issue is, is they would like to focus some of their contributions elsewhere.
Okay.
You know, we've, I mean, Purdue gives a lot, Collins gives a lot. And I think they would, you know, like, one of the things that they give is, one of them gives us rock. And we would love them to give us more rock and less, and they give grading and rock. Less grading and more rock type thing. Or something with their, you know, stuff they've got planning coming up. They like to kind of reallocate where they're putting their contributions. And so, well, I know that, you know, Buddy would like to see a contribution from the town. We just have to figure out how that looks and what we can do. I don't, I don't feel like the grading is something maybe we can do. I'd really hate to get stuck doing it, figuring out, we're contracting that out somehow. So maybe, and the pesticides, currently there's not somebody...
We don't have anybody?
No, but you know... Yeah, we have two years because Jager, Jager is going to do it. So, you know, we could put in, but at the same time, that's another concern is if we don't have somebody that's licensed to do that, or if we're stuck having to cram somebody getting licensed or whatever. Maybe we need to look at our contribution as a man out of our thing.
Is public works, so I can't possibly get them...
We've, we've talked about it, yeah.
Do we have a cost or anything like that? Because I think that'd be a good idea.
It wouldn't be too, it wouldn't be bad.
Maybe we can talk about it in later days.
Sure.
County has two people, two, is it?
At least, yeah.
At least. And then there's a couple companies that provide that or businesses. There's a gentleman out in Adele and I think there's another one.
That's Jillson.
Uh, there's Chris Wilson.
Chris Wilson.
Yeah, and so, you know, there's options out there. We just need to really figure out, I think what I'll do is just kind of let Buddy know that we may not be able to provide those two things and figure out what's up. The Little League really is a community.
Possibly if he goes over and talks to commissioners and the county might be able to do it.
You'd have to do it.
Are they building something down there or what?
They're looking at expanding and eventually having All-Stars. That's been our goal when I was on the board.
So what do you think?
Some really quality fields, some major open management, some new buildings eventually for storing equipment. They'd like to have functioning bathrooms.
See, and they're gonna lay sod down in the T-ball fields.
Oh, and water lines, they're doing sprinklers and timed water liquids on those. Because currently we've used this big can and it's very inefficient. And so that's their long-term plan. They would love to see, I think, this estimate, a couple of years, All-Stars be held here because we don't qualify as it is, is the condition of those fields. So, yeah, they've got some ambition, you know, that's some big plans.
Trying to make it more appealing for the kids and trying to bring more in for the youth in the Lakeview because there's not a lot here. You were here earlier in the meeting and they were, we talked about the work session of being able to do, they call it the old men softball tournaments.
Old women too.
Yeah, and then also looking at building some soccer, possibly some soccer tournaments out there.
But they, Little League roughly has about 300 children signed up every year. Those numbers have been steadily increasing and that's a pretty sizable...
Well, they built the soccer field. Volunteer to serve a club project if you should look at it.
Yeah, I think the community behind it like that's...
I can tell you, having served on that board and been down there many days, contributing my own time, it is probably the toughest sport being my children have ever been involved in to get contribution of man-hours. We've got fabulous donations, but man, it's tough to get because it's a busy season and if you have more than one kid, you are just...
So what do they need now, with the parking lot?
They're just wanting a grading every year and some pesticide maintenance. They've got some plant, they've got their own water, they're doing all that. I mean, they're looking at like $1,500 contribution from the town in man-hours, which, I mean, Jeff would know this better, but I kind of guessed, I mean, roughly two guys for four days.
Yeah.
You know, be it...
We could commit to that.
I didn't think that was, I thought maybe we could find out in the budget, which we're gonna look at here shortly, you know, another month or so, but we're just trying to figure out how we can keep it going.
Yeah.
But we've done our needs pretty much.
Our grader is like towards the twilight of its life.
It's a pretty old.
And one that's beyond its twilight, my two lifetimes, so I don't like to volunteer ever.
I totally understand.
Yeah. There's so, there's so much, even a used one, you know, it's $200,000.
We'd love to get you a new one.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's not gonna happen.
Okay, we'll move on down to the mayor, council, manager update.
I did have some new business on under there. So I know that one of my frustrations is I, I like to get stuff done. And I know that Scott has met with, the committee has met with Sheriff Taylor and regarding the sheriff's contract. And it's my understanding that budget is a big, a big leftover issue. Where are we at? Do we have a number that we've come up with or level of service? I think it's kind of hard to go by...
We can't discuss it at this time. I think I'll, Sheriff Taylor and I have another committee.
Okay. So, well, the discussion is you need to kind of know what the council wants for level of service or what we're okay with.
Right, and Sheriff Taylor, once Sheriff Taylor and I have our meeting on Thursday, we will come up with numbers and where we see that the town could afford, it will be submitted to the council and we discuss it.
Okay, so you guys are thinking this Thursday you're gonna have an agreement?
Now, we will have a Thursday, Sheriff Taylor was available, unavailable.
And then it goes to legal?
No, after we get all the details worked out and council sees it, and they approve it or make changes in that business.
I talked to Stephen about that in Salem, the attorney, our labor attorney, and he said it goes to legal before the council approves it. Because once we approve it...
Before they approve it, that they get to look at it, to offer any changes or any, right, if they're going to legal. So you guys will see it before this?
I would love to see it go faster rather than later.
If there's a process and it's not gonna move much faster than it is.
Which I understand, but I had a lengthy conversation with the attorney about it, about what way we need to go and what process. I mean, if we keep pushing this off, we're starting to really hurt...
Well, I could tell you in the conversations I've had with these attorneys, if we listen to what they want, we'll be sitting at this table, having the same discussion.
No, I'm just talking about the process, not the contract.
Yes, once we have our meeting on Thursday, we'll come to hopefully an agreement and we'll have a contract hopefully together that Sheriff Taylor and the committee agrees on. You guys will have, as the council, will have a chance to look at it, push your opinions and put in the input and then it'll go to legal. It doesn't make any sense to send it to legal and then bring it back and the council object.
Well, and that's where the discussion, yes, I know we're missing two members, so we don't, I do know, given what Darwin has said in a meeting here, that he was approving it as it was originally. But I don't know Sammy's input, but, because what happens then is we're looking at, in two weeks it comes to council, let's say there's more discussion, changes or not, and then we have two more weeks where attorneys are looking at it and then...
It's called due process.
Back to us. Stephen portrayed that we do not have to bring it to the council first, that if you guys, after having discussed what the council wants in the meeting, take it to the attorney for him to review, that you can bring it to the council with the expectation...
That's fine, you know, the idea was to give commissioners and the council a chance to look at it before it goes to legal. Because if it goes to legal and it comes back and the council or the commissioners decide to change something, it's gotta go back to legal. So if you think it's been drawn out now...
Well, I think we will have, we'll have to have Stephen maybe reiterate the information he sent me the other day because I was under the impression it do not have to go to the council.
It does not have to go to the council, but if it goes to legal and council says, I want this changed, or the commissioners say, I want this changed, it's gotta go back to legal to be approved before it can be passed.
Yes, but we could do it all inclusive with the council at the same time.
At the same time as what?
Like, let's say two, we just send it to legal Thursday, we can come two weeks from today, bring in changes that legal says and the council and it go back.
Right, but it's gotta go there. The whole purpose of sending it to the council prior to going to legal is try to skip a step so I don't have to go to legal, back to council, back to legal.
Yeah, I just, I'm going off what you told me. I just think that we need to expedite this as much as possible.
We can't expedite it any fashion, we're not going because...
I think you guys know where I'm coming from.
I don't know where I'm coming from. I want this contract done as bad as the next person. Honestly, I'm tired of dealing with it. And I'm sure Sheriff Taylor's tired of dealing with it. The reason why it's been drawn out the way it is is because of the council. So we need to get together a contract. The council, the town council needs to look at it because legal council's gonna drag it out and say, you know, we can't do this, we need to change this. And commissioners need to look at it to make sure that we're all on agreeance before we send it to legal. Because if we don't do that and it goes to legal, comes back, we change a bunch of stuff, it goes to legal again, comes back, we change stuff, it won't be here until next year. There's a process and a certain way this all has to be done. And the quickest way to expedite it is the way that we're working on right now to where you guys look at it prior to it going to legal. So it don't go back and forth to legal three or four times. And that's what we're trying to do that. Because if we do it, if we send it from Sheriff Taylor and I directly to legal without...
I understand what you're saying, I just had a conversation that kind of contradicts that, that's why I...
Well, yeah, they're attorneys and they want to draw this bunch of money out of this.
Well, his was faster.
Their own money. Pals are faster.
Because it was going to be discussed at a council meeting, what the level of service and funding among, obviously, in your world, all five of us. Then you would go back to the committee, hammer that out, be done, go to legal and then bring it back with the understanding that you met with the council that you're on. So I'll just have Stephen issue, you know, a statement so we're all understanding the same thing and clarify.
Ted? I have nothing, no.
I think, sure, Ted.
Oh, nope.
The only other thing was that we have that, I sent you guys an email about, there's an organization, Oregon Citizens Utility Board, that is planning on coming next week to meet with the commissioners. I would like to utilize the opportunity to meet with them. It's something that has never happened this side of the state. And obviously, its name's gonna speak for itself.
There'll be a work session set up for that, it'll be announced by tomorrow.
They also are going to do a public meeting in the evening, so I'm not sure the details of that yet.
Well, the work session will be a question and answer period.
Yeah.
But they are also meeting with the commissioner and the county commissioners. And they'll have a public, a public question and answer period and they're dealing with the chairman of the office. And I'll have more information on that probably tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make you guys aware of it.
King, you have anything else? Okay, we will adjourn council meeting at 4:46.